Cam and Tim.
Okay, it's six.
Consider ourselves called into session for the July 1st, 2024 regular meeting of the Avery County Board of Commissioners. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Welcome to our time together. Our chair, Mr. Phillips, is not with us tonight, so as vice chair, I'm assuming that role on a temporary basis. So I appreciate that very much. We will consider ourselves in session, called to order, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Young, if he would, to lead us in our invitation. Commissioner Bertelson, if you would, to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. So I'll stand.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day you have created for us on this side of the current. Dear Heavenly Father, and for all the many wonderful blessings of this life which we know comes from your bountiful hand. Dear Heavenly Father, I ask you, Lord, to be with us through this meeting. Help us, Lord, to make decisions that are acceptable to you, Lord, as we try to serve the people of Avery County to the best of our ability. Dear Heavenly Father, lead us, guide us, and direct us. Especially, Lord, we thank you most of all for Jesus and for the plan of salvation. For it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 3.2A on our agenda. Proclamations and awards.
Okay, Lord, it is my pleasure at this time, as we do every year in July, is to celebrate Avery County. And today we are here to celebrate two fine gentlemen that has been with the county for 15 years. And as everyone knows, our most valued asset is our employees. So first is Timothy Joe Franklin with our jail. Some things that his colleagues said about him, he's the best employee ever, he's a team player, and he's the right-hand man. So Timothy, we thank you for that. And the other one is Timothy, or Tim, Winters, our school resource officer. And both of these gentlemen are just high and above the call of duty. So if y'all come forward, we have a small token of appreciation. But the main thing is, gentlemen, we thank you for your service to Avery County.
Sheriff said this is going to be reflected on our checks, too.
Only reflection will be off my head. So Tim, wait a minute, no. Tim. Tim.
Yeah.
That might be a picture of all times right there.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
3.2B is our public comments, and we have no one that has signed up for public comments. I will go ahead, just for clarity and consistency. Our public comment period always works under these rules. The time limit for any comment, board, is three minutes. Board members are not expected to comment or take action on matters during the public comment. Any individual speaking during public comment shall address the entire board. Any person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. If you would like to speak to an agenda item or speak in public comment, you must sign up on the sheets at the door. Time limit to speak to an agenda item is also three minutes. We ask that you please silence all cell phones and electronic devices for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you. Next item, 3.2C, board appointments.
So, board, before you, you have three applications for the Economic Development Committee. Those have been reviewed, and so we're asking that you appoint these three individuals. They are Terry Milton, Darrell Thomas Moody, or Jerry, and a new member, Cindy Nelson.
Board, you have the three applicants. They've been under review for the previous month, so entertain a motion concerning their appointment to the Economic Development Committee.
So moved.
Same.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Thank you. So these two will be placed on the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, under 3.2C2, we have a board appointment for the Tobe River Health District Board. This is the commissioner appointee, and we are asking to appoint Mr. Dennis Aldrich.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? No comments?
I've got it. I've got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
I didn't like that hesitation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, board. We will try to serve to the best of our ability on a very important board that we do have. Next item, our 3.3A is a subdivision approval for the 1911 at Cranberry Development Phase 2B lots 85 through 88.
Good afternoon, board.
Good afternoon.
I am submitting the 1911 at Cranberry Phase 2B. This is a small extension of 1911. We've been bringing, think about the fourth plaque we've had in front of y'all. This is just cleaning up some of the existing area that was kind of already predeveloped years back. So that's a reason for the frequent smaller plaques coming through. So it's been through planning board and met all the requirements. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Board, you have four recommendations from planning board concerning this subdivision. Any emotion to move forward? So moved. Seven minutes. Second. Bertelson, any discussion, any question? All in favor, proceeding subdivision is presented, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. And Terry's.
Thank you, board. I'll need to get a signature right now.
You're making me put my glasses on.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, board. I'll take y'all.
All right, next item, 3.3B. We have Edward Henson from SkyBest discussing the cab grant.
Thank you, and good afternoon, commissioners and county managers. You know, you guys have, we've been looking at this for a long time. It's been a long time coming. Eight or nine years ago, we were here in a meeting, I think it was after a commissioners meeting, and Brent Keith is also with the, you guys know Brent, talking about broadband needs. And boy, has a lot changed in the last eight or nine years. We were looking to expand as a company. It was important to our board directors, it's important to our employees to help us expand the services to those who needed broadband services in Avery County. The funding simply wasn't there. Along the way, we looked at different grants, we talked and worked through the, applied to regional commission grants to try to find funding in every milk and cranny and corny that we could to make it work. And we've grown and expanded. But it wasn't until an unfortunate slash fortunate, and I guess you could look at double-sided sword of COVID, that opened up the possibility for additional funding for broadband for those underserved and unserved in Avery County. And the process has been long, it's been tough. Certainly appreciate all the conversations, many meetings that's been had in the county for our company and competitor companies to try to just serve people and the residents of the county. It is because of relationship, I know that county manager Philip Barrier has had with the NCDIT, the Department of Infrastructure and Technology, the countless calls, the emails, the visits, and that relationship that I think we were able to have some success in helping get Avery County monies that it deserves to expand, to open up a grant opportunity for companies like ours to serve. And it's just, again, on behalf of our leadership and our board directors, it is such an honor to be chosen to partner with you and finally get the funding closer to the full funding to serve the county. So we're real excited about that. You know, there was a challenge process in there, and within that process, we were challenged on a few areas that were deemed by another provider as served. Those are still being looked at, I guess, but for this grant, we'll cover 956 locations, an extensive amount of coverage, and going to really serve people who have absolutely no service and those who are underserved as well. So we've come a long way. We want to celebrate that success. I want to thank each and every one of you personally and those who have come before you as well for the diligence in making sure that your county and the people that you represent are getting a fair chance at broadband connectivity. There's still more to be served. We wish it'd be 100% tonight and celebrate that, but it's a huge step in the right direction, and we're so proud to be a part of that. It's a huge celebration at Skyline SkyBest as well, because we've been fighting them on really bad, too. So we're very fortunate that it's worked out this way to, you know, bring more people into the Skyline family and just sort of, you know, it means so much to each household from telehealth, telemedicine. We're in a telework economy. It's going to open up more opportunities for people to not only gain new employment, but sustain employment as well. So, you know, I just, it's almost like you're going to pinch yourself. Did it really happen? Are we here? It's been a tremendous amount of work, and I know each one of you know that personally. I know Philip knows it painstakingly well, but without this guy, you know, it really wouldn't happen. He's really been after it at the state level and just really doing a great job. So it's our honor to be a partner with them. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We want to get started. Actually, we're already underway, but we're working on some of the definite timelines. We shuffled a little bit after we had the area that was contested, changed the plan a little bit, but we're working through that. And, you know, we're just want to take tonight and thank you all for all these years of hard work. This is the biggest step forward by far. Avery County deserves it, and it's a great appreciation that I'm here to thank you all. Avery County deserves it, and it's a great appreciation that I'm here to thank you all personally, because you've probably seen enough of me as well and Brent, but we're going to, there's going to be a lot more of us, seeing a lot more of us, and look forward to what the future brings and what this broadband can do for our citizens here in Avery County. Any questions that you have for me?
Mr. Barrier, anything?
I just have a comment to the Board. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners, because you did pledge the American Rescue Plan funding to these projects, and that's how this project scored well, is because the county match. And I just want to thank you all. And I want to tell the 956 other people that do not have broadband, we will go for another grant. This one is $9,999.12, but we will try to go again, because until we have affordable, reliable internet for every household, I know that's what this Board wants, and I know that's what we would like for all homes in Avery County. So I appreciate the partnership with Skyline, so thank you.
Absolutely. I will say, in working through this in the last several years, working with the Department of Information and Technology, with the state, the Division of Broadband and Digital Equity, they stacked, you know, titles and titles and titles, but working through this process has been arduous on behalf of the county and the receiving company, and the amount of work that went into this is immense, and we are excited because of the vendor we feel that will provide the services for us in a timely manner. And we had originally thought, we were hoping to leverage that money into about $8 million, and were, as Philip said, just shy of $10 million, so we feel that's a win, and just the step one, we're getting where we need to be, so thank you. Board, anyone else?
I'd like to thank you myself. I went with SkyBest when you had dial-up, and I'm hoping to get back with SkyBest when you get the internet run, but I appreciate everything you've done. You've worked hard for Avery County to be able to have this, and I thank you.
We thank you all, and want to applaud you for the wisdom in looking forward when some of the other counties surrounding us, even in different states, took different paths with their ARPA funding. You were able to look a few shots ahead and leverage the ARPA funds that you had to mean, you know, to bring in substantially more. So the ARPA funds that you had, although they were smaller, you leveraged those out to make it a $9.9 million project instead of a $1.5 million project. And as the costs have gone through the roof with everything from labor to electronics to fiber, all of that, you know, today's dollar doesn't get as much as it would some years ago, so it's taking more money. The foresight that you had and the diligence that you put into it is the reason why these people are going to get served and why there's going to be more. So thank you for that wisdom and being willing to make, you know, the sacrifice for the right decision to get to where we are today. Not always easy, I know it's a hard job, but I want to thank you personally for that as well.
Thank you. Out of next is 3.3C, Resolution by the County of Avery authorizing the execution of the opioid settlements and approving the second supplemental agreement for additional funds. So we have, that's a mouthful. Sarah Price from High Country Council of Governments is here to lead us through that.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me back again. The first thing on your agenda is, like Dennis just said, approving the second supplemental additional funds for opioid settlements. So this is in relation to the Kroger funds, and Avery County is expected to receive $90,762.52 over approximately 10 years. So with, first, we would hope that you approve that resolution, and then I'll move into the opioid settlement fund grants for the county as well.
Do we need to read that?
We need to adopt this resolution first.
We need to read that into record.
I think just the resolution portion, the last paragraph on the first page.
I'll go ahead. So again, Board, this is for the litigation against Kroger, and therefore it being resolved that the Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes the County Manager to execute all documents necessary to enter into the opioid settlement agreement with Kroger to execute the SAA-F-2 and to revise such documents to Rubris and the Implementation Administrator.
And I would request that an additional sentence be added to that, that the Board specifically accepts the funds.
Remember to adopt this resolution with the changes noted by our Attorney.
I'll make that motion.
Your second. Any questions? All in favor of adopting this resolution? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Is there or none? So we will continue with that. Sarah?
So next, in front of you, is a resolution to basically expand its funds under the opioid settlement funds for the county. This is the, what we've been discussing, the four nonprofit organizations that will be working in fiscal year 25. The resolution is $182,250. If you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer any questions for those. I will also make note that the resolution that you just passed to adopt the second supplemental agreement for additional funds is included in this resolution now presented before you for the nonprofit organizations for the upcoming fiscal year.
Let's look down to the total dollar amounts of the opioid settlement funds, noted as $182,250, and broken down into seven strategies that were authorized, and this money comes from the opioid money that we have received, be paid out over the next year. Move to adopt this resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. And the resolution passed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
And just to give some context and clarity, there's, this is an ongoing process as we just, with this new settlement with Kroger and the other, there's another segment coming with pharmaceutical companies, so this process is ongoing, and we're fortunate to have our High Country Council of Government and this price to lead us through a very complicated process of both receiving, administering, and paying out those funds over the next 20 years. So what we have is great and we're doing some wonderful work, but we also have a bright future, possibly even some more funding to just chance in the years ahead, so thank you. Out of next, it'll be 3.3B, Our Tax Administrator Report on your Attorney.
Got a little, got a lengthy one tonight. So every year, we're, I'm charged with presenting collections for fiscal year, so you have it on the big board over there, and bear with me, I'm going to have all the figures to you too. Okay. So our original levy for county tax was $19,450,539.96. The fire tax was $3,774.32. For a total of the original levy of $23,224,572.05. Out of that, we had releases of county tax $8,825.67, fire tax $1,009.0180, for a total of $10,727.47. But to add back into that are our discoveries, which were $251,566.66 in county tax, fire tax $48,248.44, for a total of $299,815.10. This is not on your paper or on the slide, but just as a little comparison, in our discoveries, public utilities are appraised by the Department of Revenue, so we have a total for them. The total for our public utilities out of the discoveries were $274,434.14. So then our regular discoveries were $25,380.96. And the reason why I put those totals in there is just to kind of show the offset between the discoveries and the releases, just to kind of give you an idea of what's going on there. So our total levy was $23,513,659.68. There again, I'm going to read that total again. I know this is a little redundant, but we used to have motor vehicles on there, so I'll just go over this one again. For 2023, our total was $23,513,659.68. We collected $23,122,545.90. Our collection rate is 98.34%. Motor vehicles are zero because we stopped collecting and billing motor vehicle tax through our office back in 2014. Going back to 2022, our total levy was $22,685,110.79. Total collected is $22,520,152.69. Our collection rate for '22 now is 99.27. So as you can tell, we keep collecting the back taxes. Then our 10-year total, our levy, our total levy for all tax fields were $201,277.47, excuse me, $201,277,470.85. Total collected for the total 10 years, $204,017,58.26, with a collection rate of 99.57. Switch over. I don't think that's, that's right.
Which is wrong.
There we go. Our real and personal property was $201,273,916.86. Total collected, $204,433.79. Collection rate, 99.57. Then our motor vehicles were, that's the last year that we ran the bills through us, was $3,553.99. We collected $2,072.40, and the collection rate for that is 76%. So for 2023, our payment agreements are $12,081.79. Our 10-year payment agreement is $60,428.65. Our outstanding bankruptcies are, for 2023, $1,174.24. For the 10-year, $7,878.15. We turned over to the County Attorney for 2023, $32,286.83. Our 10-year outstanding pursuits are $245,967.41. And I think I need an approval for those, right?
Yes. Move to approve.
Second.
Save your breath, too. All in favor? Any questions?
I think that's the best report we've seen on the percentage on collecting and everything, and we want to thank you for that.
Well, I appreciate that. We work hard, the office works hard. I can't tell you how thrilled I am with how everybody's doing and how things are going, and it's not me, it's them, so I just want you to know that.
Well, you just tell them we appreciate it.
I will, and I know that they appreciate y'all, because they've talked about how you worked hard to keep the budget and keep the budget in line, keep the tax rate in line, because we see both sides. We see the appraisal side, but we also see the struggle to pay your taxes, and so we really appreciate that and everything that you gave us out of that budget too, so thank you. So I guess on...
Hold on a second. You have a motion and second.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor? Aye. Receiving report as presented. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
I talk too much. Okay. Onto my regular stuff. Our monthly collections for the month of June was $54,217.69. We need an approval for that.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
Our releases for the month of June were $2,034.06. The bulk of that was the release that I had prior, that I brought to you last month, just to clarify.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
I'd like to say this, Andrea, I appreciate your availability of when you just answer the phone any time you call, and off the top of your head, know the exact answer. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that a lot. My revaluation sales, my June sales were, we had 40 sales, we had a six, our sales ratio is 60%. Last year, we had 67 sales, and our sales ratio was at 67%. I just want to call your attention to the very last sale that I put in that stack for you. This is a lot of what we're seeing. If you look under the sales data, you'll see that that property sold in '20, '22, and '24, and it continued to grow each time for what it sold for. And we see, we're seeing a lot of that, and I just kind of wanted to point that out. I have one last thing, and I'll quit talking, but this is just something I, it wasn't something I included in your stuff, but I did lay something up there. For, I got an email from the finance, the tax and finance person for David Baker over the County Commissioner, I forget what it's called now. But we have a couple things that are showing up in, it's already been through the House, and it's showing up to change some things in our Machinery Act, which is how we do, what we're governed by and how we do things, and some of them are really not good. One of them is the, to require an additional means of notice to advertise property tax liens. We already have the newspaper and what we advertise in the office, but they're adding language that, in addition to that, we need to also advertise the tax lien by posting a notice of lien in a conspicuous manner at the parcel to be advertised. We advertised 1,821 mains this spring. If we have to go and do 1,821 postings, I don't know how we'll do it. We just, that's going to cost the county money, it's going to, we just don't have the staff for that, and none of the counties do. I mean, I can't imagine what Wake County must be thinking about this for all their people. So that's a big one, and the reason why I bring this up is I'm just asking for everybody to reach out to our representatives and say, hey, wait a minute, we got to rethink some of this stuff, because these offices can't do that. because these offices can't do that. There's one that's a little lesser, it doesn't really, it's not a major effective thing, the qualified business personal property. I highlighted that one, but it is not, it's okay. It's, if that changes, that's not a big deal. But the next one is where they're asking to extend our listing period. And our listing period is January 1st, first business day of January through the last day of January. And they're asking to extend it from just the month of January to all the way to April 15th. That in itself would put such a strain on us and for you all, because if everybody waits to list till April 15th, then we've got all of that information. It's not just business personal property, it's not just trailers and personal property, it's real property. We pick up a lot of stuff through listing forms, and April 15th...
June 13th.
Wait, your totals ready?
Yeah, we start bumping up against budget time. We won't have good figures to give you all because we don't know what's there. So I'm just kind of asking if y'all could reach out and kind of talk to some people and see what we can do about this, because those two things are major for the, for us, for the county as a whole and for the tax office especially. And I think that's all, if I may.
Those items, our state North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is aware of this, both Senate Bill 607 and Senate Bill 640, to try to deal with these changes because it would be very detrimental to the county. Both of these, and as a matter of fact, we were just discussing recently the possibility of not using a newspaper because of it being a less-than-current means of communication. And it's also very costly to put those notices out and to try to communicate in a more timely way or a more digital way. And we even, it looks like we're taking a step even further backwards by posting an actual physical sign, you know? So I think this, we will reach out to the association, but I think they're very well aware of that and the burden it would place upon the county.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I know David Baker pretty well because he was the director of the Department of Revenue, and I know that he is in touch and he talks a lot with everybody, the powers that be, but if we could just have some extra people reach out and, because I don't know how we get it done. Okay, thank you.
Item next, 3.3F, request for proposal for a service agreement for collection of information to implement the occupancy tax for District A.
So Board, we have three responses to our request for proposal, and we have met as a team, administration and finance, and we would like to recommend that we go with Deckard Technologies. They had a great proposal, they've estimated over nine-hundred properties, identified the property addresses, they will send out a letter campaign to all the motels and the short-term rental owners. They will also have no limit on the user accounts that we have. They also have a single point of contact for our county staff to ask questions, because the first year we're doing this is going to be rather difficult, so I'm just asking for your approval to move forward with Deckard and to also, when the county attorney approves, to sign the service agreement with that company so that they can start this campaign so we can be effective as quick as possible, being that our tax is, begins on August 1st.
How will I be paid?
We have it in the budget, we have money in the budget to cover their expenses.
Taxes collected, will we not be able to use that money to pay?
In the future, if we need the company in the future, yes, it would be. But this is the first year, so we're unsure about funds at this point, so it was better to put it into, in the budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye, aye, all opposed, nay. So that authorized, this is just the authorization to proceed, and once the contract for services is approved, it will come back to us for approval. Right?
Is that how we need to do it?
Yep, yes.
Okay, so our next meeting is not till August, so they can't begin their work until after the due date. Is that going, it's a service contract, so...
If Board wanted to grant a discretion for approval, a plot approval by the manager and the county attorney of the contract, that can be done since the amount is already before the Board.
So there's a question, rather than waiting for, we brought back the next meeting, that we have conditional approval for the service contract to be approved by the attorney and the county manager, with the numbers being as in this presentation that we saw tonight.
I make that motion.
Absolutely. Hope you can question to do so, I second it.
All right, all in favor, aye, aye, all opposed, nay.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle. Item next, 3.4A, county manager report.
So general updates, and everybody's sitting down, so... First, I want to announce that there is a public input session for the establishment of a domestic violence zone on Wednesday, July 10th, 2024, from 10 to 12:00. And again, on Tuesday, July 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00, located in every county commissioner's board room. This room, every county will be hosting two community input sessions to get a feedback on a proposal to repurpose their nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar community development block, neighborhood rehabilitation funding, originally to be used for the reentry housing to meet the needs of the victims of domestic violence. If anyone has any questions, say feel free to call my office. So that again is July 10th, from 10:00 to 12:00, and again on Tuesday, July 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00. 10th and 16th. Secondly, we have a upcoming outdoor event at the community center, Celebrate Avery with Darren and Brooke Aldrich. This is a free event at the community center outdoor stage. There will be nonprofit informational booths, food trucks, and other entertainment throughout the day, and that again is July 20th, from 2:00 to 8:00 P.M. Also, speaking of the nonprofits for that event, we have sent out word to nonprofits, but if there's anyone out there that we did not send an invitation to, please call county manager's office and get your name on the list. I think as of today, we had fourteen nonprofits that are interested. On Thursday, and a lot of this is in your informational packets board, so you don't have to remember everything, but the Historic Commons Ribbon Cutting for Lees McCray College is Thursday, July 18th, and that's at 10:00 A.M. So anyone that would like to go, please let us know. We talked a lot about broadband tonight, but I just want to let everyone know that it's still available for you to email Jeffrey Brooks if you do not have fiber to your home to make sure your address is covered. So again, we're going to try to push this as much as possible to get affordable, reliable internet to every home. So that is still on the website and still available through print, so if anyone needs that information. We're coming up on the Fourth of July holidays, so just to mention a few, we have plenty of opportunities. So July 2nd, which is tomorrow night at Cranberry, yes, the event starts at 7:00 P.M. Mount Victory.
No, Thursday's Sunday, I like to say that.
It's the 7th.
It was on the internet today that it's tomorrow night. Rain date was the 7th. But maybe...
They must have changed.
It's not the sign in, the Cranberries.
The sign says the 7th. Okay, then go with the sign, don't go with the internet.
I'm sure it's...
Mount Victory up on, at Millford Timber Road on the, on the mountain, they have fireworks on Wednesday night. The event starts at 5:00 and ends at 10:00. July 4th, you have Beach Mountain fireworks at dusk, Better Elk has their parade at 11:00. Sugar Mountain has their fireworks and things from 6:00 to 9:00, and Cross North Parade's at 4:00, and the fireworks are at dusk. On July 5th, Elf Park will have their event, starts at 6:00 o'clock, and the fireworks at 9:30. And then on July the 6th, Dylan Parade at 11:00, and the fireworks again are at dusk. So plenty of opportunity. We like our fireworks in the mountains. Just a reminder, the Highland Games are the following week, July 11th through the 14th, so expect traffic, and if you want to go, there's plenty of information on their Just want to let everyone know that all the replacements for the community development block grant that we're currently replacing homes are in, the last home is being worked on, and as soon as it's final, I'll let you know. So we will go after another grant, thanks to the team that works with that, and Ruth Shirley at the Senior Center for all the help with that, and we couldn't, of course, do it without Michelle Ball. Congressman Chuck Edwards on Monday, July 15th, will be at the Dylan Tire Department at 7:30. So I believe you have that on your schedule. Speaking of the opioid funds, we just got word last week, last Thursday, that there has been a settlement agreement now with Purdue. So I expect us to go through all these motions again with a resolution in the near future. There's some information in your packet about the kitchen, the roof and the heat system at Avery High, and it's going as well as can be expected, you know, with all projects come hiccup, so they are working through that. And we have a new reverse 911 system called Regroup, so we need people to please go on there and sign up. It's on the front page of our website at averycountync.gov. Regroup will be our new reverse 911 mass notification system. We will push that out through Facebook and other means. Today was the first day we got it implemented, so that's a new enhancement. This company should hopefully do a better job than the previous company. Any questions on all that?
Question on that last item, if citizens have signed up on the previous system, do they, will that be switched over or do they need to...
It is not an automatic switch over, so yes, we will need to push and get everybody signed up on the new system. Next is our legislative goals, so I need to hear from you commissioners, so this is your homework. Everybody knows that the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners wants one voice, and when we go, in every two years, they ask, when the long session, proceeding the long session, they ask for legislative goals from the counties. In the past, we've worked on things like broadband and the drug crisis, and those things are getting checked off the list. Some things that I've heard is to work on workforce housing and affordability of daycare for working families. So we, our deadline for this is on August 23rd, so if you all will see me, be thinking about that, and I will be asking questions about what we want to present as our legislative goals to the NCACC, and thank them for what they do, where they take this information and make a difference for every county and the state. So with that, I believe that's everything.
I will follow up on that at the NCACC with the legislative component. Our association is, by all accounts, if not the strongest in the nation, one of the strongest. And whenever the legislative advocates from the association go to the General Assembly, they are listened to. And it's, it's great to have that strong of a voice at the General Assembly and to be so familiar with the people that's there. And as we move through them, it is not just an exercise, it really does bring about substantive change if we work through the means there, and it gives us a common voice for all 100 counties. That's the sort of the motto of the association, 100 strong, and it's good to have a unified voice as we go before the General Assembly. So let's be thinking about what things we'd like to present to them. All right? Item next is our 3.4B, our finance officer report.
Good afternoon, Board. I have a few items for consideration this afternoon. Item number one, in fiscal year 2023-24, the sheriff's office was awarded various grants, the fund expenses related to the DARE program. Of these funds, thirteen-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and eighty cents were not spent, and the department has requested that they be rolled forward into the '24-'25 fiscal year. Request the Board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit DARE drug prevention, thirteen-thousand, four-eighty-nine, eighty, and credit fund balance appropriated, thirteen-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and eighty cents.
Your motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Item number two, the sheriff's office receives money, it says each month, but periodically for proceeds, proceeds from state unauthorized substance excise tax. At the end of each fiscal year, the remaining monies must be carried forward to the next budget year to be in compliance with state regulations. We need to remove this, we need to move this money into FY 24-25. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit state drug fund expense, six-thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and seventy-two cents, and credit fund balance appropriated, six-thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and seventy-two cents.
Move to approve.
All in favor, aye.
Item number three, in the 21-22 fiscal year, the county received a Dogwood Health Trust grant that would complete a housing needs assessment in every county. This money will need to be moved forward into the '24-'25 fiscal year to finish out the grant. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit Dogwood Trust Housing Assessment Grant, twenty-seven thousand dollars, and credit fund balance appropriated, twenty-seven thousand.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor, aye.
In 23-24 fiscal year, the county received a Dogwood Health Trust Grant to aid in the planning and implementation of the opioid settlement funds. This money will need to be moved forward into the '24-'25 fiscal year. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit Dogwood Trust opioid grant, two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents, and credit fund balance appropriated, two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Move to approve. Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Item number five, the Department of Emergency Management has received money from FEMA for various expenses related to pandemic response, and has requested that these funds be rolled over into the '24-'25 fiscal year budget. Request the Board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit FEMA, fifteen-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents, and credit fund balance appropriated, fifteen-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Make motion to approve.
All in favor, aye.
Item number six, the Avery County Board of Commissioners and a commitment to providing the most adequate facilities for the students of Avery County, approved the Avery High School Kitchen Renovation Project. The remaining funding for this project will need to be moved into the current fiscal year. This amendment also covers the roofing contract and commercial dishwasher that was not part of the original construction contract. Request the Board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit Avery County Schools' capital outlay, one-million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and eighty-four cents, and credit fund balance appropriated, one-million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and eighty-four cents.
Is your motion?
Is there a choice?
No.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? And I noted that this is not the total cost of this... Not noting that this is not the, the total cost of this renovation, this is merely the portion that's moved into the next year.
Correct, yes.
All in favor, aye.
Item number seven, to appropriate opioid settlement funds in accordance with MOU guidelines, the annual budget ordinance must be amended to equal the allocations below. Request the Board to approve the following amendments to the budget ordinance. The following amounts are hereby appropriated in special revenue fund for the opioid settlements fund in Avery County during fiscal year beginning July 21, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, in accordance with the charter of accounts that I'm about to list, and that is recognizing $182,250 of opioid settlement fund revenue, and appropriations for Freedom Life Avery of $56,250. High Country Community Health, $50,000. Marjorie Williams Academy, $25,000. Mediation and Restored Justice Center, $51,000, for a total of $182,250.
Six. Will you put the total for Freedom Life, please?
$56,250.
I misunderstood, thank you.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
All right, just two more to go. The library glass replacement project was budgeted in FY 2324, but was not completed due to contractor delays. In order for this project to be completed, the funds would need to be moved into the current year budget. Request the Board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit library annex, $33,000, and credit fund balance appropriated, $33,000.
I make a motion to adopt.
Second. All in favor, aye.
And this last one, Eric and myself worked very hard to not have to do this, and we almost had a truck here on Friday so we could not have to roll this money forward, but it seems like it just get, getting pushed further and further, so hopefully within the week, we'll have a truck here, but we're in the new budget year, so that's why I'm bringing you this amendment. I gave this to the city at the last moment. The solid waste department was budgeting 2324 for a new roll-off truck. The truck has not yet been delivered, and they're requesting the money be rolled into the 2425 budget. Request the Board to approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay equipment, $285,000, and credit fund balance appropriated, $285,000.
Should only prove that everything we're going to have to play.
Yeah, just bring it to.
Don't, don't let us look at it.
Move to approve.
All in favor, aye.
All right, that's all I have.
I will say that this, what we just went through here is so indicative of the quality of the staff that we have in finance. All of these year-ending technical corrections are done with such precision and according to all accounting standards and rules, which is why our audits always show up so well, because the money is in the year that it's supposed to be spent. And even with this truck that was just mentioned, we could have had it delivered, but then we would have had it just sitting here with nobody owning it. And the awareness of the liability that would be involved there made the, the function of having to go through the, the technical correction very well worth it. So thank you for the diligence to protect the money that the county has brought in.
Absolutely. I want to definitely minimize any liability. If it's a little more work on my end, I want to make sure it's done the way it needs to be done.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank y'all, Board, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item next, 3.4C, our county attorney report.
I do not have anything that requires the Board's actions, unless the Board has any question about the transportation and other agreements that are in the consent items.
Board? Thank you. Do we have any staff reports and requests, item 3.5?
We do not.
3.6, do we have anything that requires closed session?
I do not have anything.
All right. 3.7, we have received the minutes for the May 2, 2024 budget workshop, was in our, sent out to us this week. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
All in favor, aye. You'll find in your packet all of our agenda consent items. Is there anything in agenda consent that needs to be taken out for particular discussion? We will consider those approved by consent, and informational items you receive also in your packet, a number, and I do mean a number of those. The packet was about 200 pages, I think, of all the informational items, so I hope that you will take the time to consider those.
Another question about EMS grandfather, will we provide it to him the information? Is that something that is just standard?
Yes, we've been doing that for several years now.
Doesn't, yeah, but it doesn't have to be approved each year?
It is, it's an agreement done each year.
It's in your consent.
It's in your consent.
I use the information that Jen will want.
And I think it's for transportation and EMS.
There are two separate agreements.
I'm good, thank you.
Board, is there any board comments, questions? No, we will consider a motion to adjourn. Oh, yeah. When is our?
August 5.
August 5 will be our next scheduled meeting here at 6 o'clock.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. And we're all on approval of that and done.
That's it. Thank you, Board.